In my mind, we will, if we do that, it's gonna cost us because we have to pay up to date. If we continue to do this, you know, we're gonna be in the hole. I'd rather take my losses and then redirect so that we can make a park than at that scale. And if we can save another, you know, five hundred thousand, I'd rather pay five hundred thousand less on top of the seven hundred fifty thousand or even a million dollars, and that's where we're at.
Right, and Mr. Rodriguez, again, this is the fact that this contract was already laid before we got here. I know people have been wondering what parts this, parts that, and it's the fact that it was already there. We either cut the contract, you know, Mr. Rodriguez said, pay for whatever has been there, but get no part. You know, we lose all the money, it's already been paid, or we say, okay, we'll pay for the rest of it, which is a lot of money, unfortunately, the contract is already there, you know, we would be reaching a contract. So that's basically the decision we're at right now, is either do we go ahead and cancel the project and pay whatever's been done, or we go ahead and say, try to get as much as we can saved, but I mean, it's not gonna be a whole lot, you see, we've already taken out the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. We went to Austin last month, and I mean, there were vendors there for playgrounds who had them in the low fifties, you know, hardly any of them had it at seven fifty, not even a hundred thousand. And for us, now this is ridiculous because here we are, we were gonna make a contract for playground for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, and in Austin, you have vendors who are selling for much cheaper. And so that's why this item is on the agenda, not so much to build a new park or to say that we're gonna do another contract, but it's a contract that was already there since we got here. In the past six months, we've been trying to amend it, trying to change it, and now we're either, like Mr. Martinez said, he needs direction from council, we wanna cancel it, or we wanna go ahead and continue with it, it just depends on what is the best option for the city, and that's what we're gonna discuss, Mr. Rodriguez.
Another note, I want people to understand, there was a park there, and there will be a park there, but not at the scale of a two, over three million dollars, okay? There will be a park, but what I'm trying to, you know, I think, just to give you an idea, three million dollars, say we cut our losses and we have to forfeit a million dollars, okay? There's still two million dollars on the table. With those two million dollars, when I did crunch the numbers to the mayor when we were in Austin, we could have done, put back the same things, trees, sidewalks, the whole thing, we could have saved, we could use, because they own a hundred million dollars, and still have a park, okay? So my whole thing is, is that I'm thinking of just cutting our losses and build up another park, a nice park. We've looked at these equipments and, you know, like I said, we will save money, but we'll have a park.
Right, and the situation like this, where we have people wondering, well, why hasn't more done, been more done for the city in the past six months? Well, it's because of reasons like this, that the money's tied up in contracts that were already there before we got in. We've been trying to amend the contract, we've been trying to change, we've been trying to save as much money as we can. And you can see right now, with the budget mentioned, we're trying to make it so the people's core are more safe. You know, we have a lot of issues for the code enforcing, where you have a lot of houses that aren't compliant, and because of the way that was structured before, it was a part-time job, you said, you did your job, you got pulled into patrolling, and so we're trying to make this contract work for the city. Like Mr. Rodriguez said, we're either gonna move forward or not. And it's what we've been saying since we ran, it's just the fact, it's not about building new shiny things, it's about looking at what we already have. The city has a lot of parks, are there new with maintenance, perhaps not, some are, some aren't, but we do have to focus on what we already have, instead of focusing millions of dollars on parks when we have more pressing issues, Mr. Rodriguez.
My concern is, and the people in District Four's concern is, they're building a three million dollar park in my district, and yet there's people right next to that park that have been asking for sewer for fifteen years. And I think it's right to build a park for three million dollars there and have these people with cesspools and they gotta pay a hundred and some dollars a month to clean them out. We have a gentleman that's been asking for sewer, and he told me, well, wait, the sewer's coming right by your house, we'll clean up for you, right across the street. These people are there without sewer and drainage, so I think that instead of having that beautiful park there, I think they would be more satisfied if we had sewer and other stuff that they need on the streets and in the park. Let's get the streets, let's get the sewer, let's get the drainage and everything fixed first, and then let's cut the second parks.
Right, and I just wanna say that, I mean, that is, that has the mentality this country, we came in, like I said, this contract was already laid before we got in. Again, people ask, well, why haven't you done this, why haven't you done that? Because the money's tied up elsewhere, you know, and if we do, as Mr. Rodriguez is saying, that we cut our losses, that's gonna be money that is gonna have to pay for nothing, and you know, it's something that we're gonna have to do if we go that route, you know, and I want people to understand that that's something that we all need to choose together. You know, either we pay money to get out of the contract and don't get a park, or, and you know, I don't wanna hear about how many of us, you know, that, oh, we wasted a million dollars on nothing, you know, it was for the betterment of the city. We either cut our losses, don't get a park, have what we had before, or we say, all right, we're gonna pay for the full price. You know, that's just the decision that's on the table.
And that's what we're, and that's one of the, it's one of the difficult things that we have to do at City Council, you know, it's a difficult decision, I do the math, we will still say, I wanna say somewhere near the vicinity of a million dollars, but you know, it's something that, and on top of that, we can still have a park, okay? That's what I want you guys to know.
Mr. Martinez, so would this be fit, I mean, do you have any direction, like, do you think we could plan it out a little bit, or do you wanna talk about the objective?
I do have, I should probably spell out two things about illegal options in executive session and constitutes legal advice.
So then I go ahead and make a motion to...
Mayor, and we do have Sokilamos somehow to speak.
Oh, we can go ahead and make a motion still, we still have a board on it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You wanna stick now then, or you wanna stick after the motion's made?
I'll let it be.
Okay.
Definitely, I agree with my representative on District Four, and mostly everything that you've said is...
Do you need her name, or?
Sokilamos, of course, you can address the question. We're equal, fair, and honest to speak, see, anyway, I'd like to infer you, because yes, we do need to go in that direction, not spend so much money in what already is there and can be done, but not as, ah, we don't need windmills, we need the wind, but not the windmill. I will tell you, like you said, we've been there for years, waiting for the simplest basic things, and we still don't have them. I'm not the only one speaking, and you know it, many have come before this council asking for sewer water still in some places, and there's none. It's time that we get this done. Let's not talk about it, let's take it to action, and thank you for considering the needs of our community instead of building a park that will wear off with time. Tierra con sacate, mesas, arbolitos, where we can come, run, play, and have a good time as a family serves good enough for us, but we cannot do away with the most basic needs, which is that sewer for good health and water. Health comes first in our district and infrastructure. Thank you, and God bless, and I'll be looking, then it gets done. Thank you very much.
Mr. Suki.
Yes.
Thank you. One of the things I wanna stress on is that we did already talk to Lower Valley Water District, we had a meeting, we already talked to them, we are gonna bring and help them bring sewers to District Four. There's also a plan, and they're at a bigger scale, at about five point six million dollars, correct?
Yes.
Five point six million dollars. Well, what we're gonna do is that we're gonna help try to regain first, because that's at a smaller scale, because that road needs to be paved, so there's not just that street, but I mean, there's other streets in our community that are hurting, but, you know, we are doing our best, it just takes time, and that's what I've been saying, you know, for six months, it's, you know, we've been on the phone, talking to everybody we can, we need all the help we can get, you might not see any progression right now, but believe me, you know, give us another six months, and you'll see what we've been trying to accomplish. You know, it's all time, it's all time.
Thank you very much, and I would just say that I hope that some of the other people that are living in our District Four will not become envidiosos, and thank God that we're starting somewhere. I thank you, and I do look forward to seeing some of these projects getting done. Thank you.
How was my answer?
Can anybody else make another one?
You have to sign up for the poll.
I, like I say, it was very promising to me that we had the, with one District, it was very promising, and they will get started on the sewer lines for the streets that we needed in District Four. The problem is there that we have streets that have water, then two or three streets don't have water, right next to them, and then another street has water, and then maybe one street doesn't have it, and another street has water. And they wanna know why, so we talked to the Water District, and they're gonna look into the problem and get the engineers working on it. So...
Who went to talk to you?
Me, Bo, me and Mr. Bolin, I talked to Mr. Sanchez. The whole thing is that they already had a plan, a comprehensive plan, all they're waiting for is funding from the state. They already have District One, where they're working on it. We also told them that, you know, we needed to help District One, kind of, you know, move the movement on some of the developments and the projects that are being done, and they're...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I go up?
Yeah.
Okay, we're proper, we've all posted to discuss, or Lower Valley Water's your project for discussion, yeah, sorry.
So just make a motion. What's the matter, I want you to move to the side.
Now, I just wanna say that the reason this is also on the agenda is to make sure that people are aware of the cost of this project, that was never mentioned before, what it's gonna cost, what we're gonna end up with after the decision is made, and there was never any opportunity to have public input, and that's why we're bringing it out now, so that you know what it is gonna take to make a decision that's gonna affect us financially, and that's...
Right, and I mean, I just wanna stress one more time the fact that these issues happen because for three years, you were in by City Council, you know, they put the priorities differently, and we came into office, and we all, the community rallied behind us, you know, eventually came into office, and we wanted, and we come into office and find all these issues that, you know, you might not have known about before, but they're very apparently come in here, and it's very difficult to say, this project has been in the works for six months, we're trying to cancel, we're trying to amend it, and here we are again one more time. So it's not just a simple quick fix we can go ahead and do. And I wish that people would have been more patient, which people are more patient. You know, you can't do what happened in three years in six months, you know, not for people to call us untransparent, I even heard I was just a little corrupt, and I think it's very sad because of the fact that it's been three years, and in six months, we cannot do a lot of the issues that happened. We're trying our best, like Mr. Rodriguez mentioned, he talked with Lower Valley, which is normally, and Mr. Bolin, these are meetings that weren't happening before, and everything takes time, and I just want to all be patient, unfortunately, not everybody's dealt that way, and I mean, I just want you to know that this is why it's here, because we want to make good for the city's core, not because we wanna take it to a different level. We don't like this idea, we never liked it, we never wanted to push it, we've always tried to change it, and once again, here we are, we'll take it into executive, I guess, and then we'll decide, so...
They can move to move file item number sixteen after executive.
I second the motion. I have a motion in a second, any further discussions of this?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez? Over here.
Motion made by Gloria Rodriguez, seconded by Renee Rodriguez, to move after executive session. Mayor Garcia is absent, Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Bolin?
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item sixteen.
Mayor, would we have two speakers for item number sixteen?
Would you all have to wait before or after discussion?
After your discussion.
After?
After your, before you make the motion, please.
Discussion action to allocate approximately one point three million certificates of obligation for the Core Bridge, Bridgehead Project number two zero one four dot zero zero one. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, basically, under the advice of the city attorney of financing this particular project, they wanted to go back on public record of saying, where are we gonna get the one point three million dollars for the bridge project, and I'm here to report to indicate that that one point three million dollars will be financed with capital improvement certificates that we had from the last issuance. Currently, there should be at least a million five or a million six uncommitted funds in order to do that particular project.
So this wouldn't be going out for a new certificate of obligation?
No, that money is already existing, it's already here, it's already in the bank, it's been in the bank, it's now actually applying that money for that particular project, is what we're trying to do at this juncture.
So this will be different than in the search, basically, is that the same time?
It is, it is certificate of obligation, unspent money, not the general fund, but the capital improvement fund has approximately a million five uncommitted to any project, and that's what we're trying to commit for the bridge.
We could, you say approximately one point three billion, it could be less or it could be more?
No, it's approximately one point five million in there. The cost could be less than one point three billion because we have potentiality of getting some of the concrete donated, as well as twenty percent from the developer to offset that cost, but under the advice of the city attorney, we wanna say, we have the money, and in all likelihood, it'll be far less coming from us, but we wanna say we got the money for the total project.
Is there a different way to work this, because when you do read this, it does seem that you're going out for certificates of obligations, like if I previously acquired, right, I thought?
Just because it does, like, read that, it sounds like way of work.
You could certainly say, you know, enhance it to say to allocate
Existing?
Existing or already funded certificates of obligation. I can tell you, in legalese, what the penance focus on is allocate, oh, that means we already have because if it was new money, it would say, the term of art is usually issue or sell, to issue or sell UCOs.
Hold on, Mr. Bolin?
My question is, when the builders bought that land, did they realize that there was only one exit for that particular plot, and then we have to pay for it for the bridge?
My understanding is that...
When was this approved, the plot?
Two thousand eight, and that is the reason they are contributing with the twenty percent of the total cost of the bridge.
So it's approved five years ago?
Yes.
And what happened back then, the denials?
No, the subdivision, not the bridge.
Right.
Okay, so they did the plot in two thousand and eight, and they went ahead and do it without the bridge, right?
They did...
So they knew that there was no other way except to...
It was as one.
Okay. Mr. Bolin, still have any questions? Please to have one question, will you?
No, actually.
Anybody else? All right, does, do you have a motion?
No, you can't, you need to speak up.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Flay?
Mrs. Flay. No, Mrs. Flay.
First time in the panel, also.
Mrs. Flay was first.
But he's first on the list, and I...
Ladies first?
No, your person?
Ladies first.
I'm here again.
The way, look, the way I'm looking, it says, again, Tommy Faulkner. And this, the way it looks like if you're going out for another certificate, hold on, let me, then that's us going out for another certificate application. In two thousand and eight, the plot was approved and everything, and the subdivision was on the contract and everything, Mr. Bolin, when we were in office, and the subdivision, he was supposed to make pass more into the four lane or put more money in for the bridge. It's not no twenty percent, it was supposed to be thirty percent or more, coming out of the contract that they're building that plot, that was the deal. Whenever they changed it, I don't know what they changed it to or whatever, but the first guy was supposed to, he was supposed to put at least thirty to forty percent out of his pocket. He knew there was only one road in there, it's either make pass more into the four lane or force more money out on the bridge, that was the deal. And also, in their open meeting, yes, a lot of that stuff, they're concerned, that is only, but it's supposed to go into consent agenda, not on the regular agenda, but the...
You're still about subdivision, right?
Huh? No, yeah, it's under, just to answer your question earlier, I...
Please speak to, I don't use any...
Yeah, I know, you asked me, but there was an open meeting, I cannot answer your not to meetings, but...
You use any of your agenda, I don't use any.
Yes, I do. Okay, and this, you need to revise everything, and also revise, and...
Quick question, was there a contract with that?
Yes, there was.
Was it? Mr. Bolin, was there ever a contract with that?
Contract?
Was there ever a contract that said that he had to pay for a percent of the bridge?
Extending the four lane on passmore?
No, it was not a contract for that, it was a contribution for a percentage of the bridge.
You need to go back and revise everything before you are doing anything else on this building, and also make sure on the, the job head bar for the right bits, to make sure that there's not too much money spent on this that's not supposed to be spent, so...
Thank you.
Lola Saffray? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lola Saffray, and I wanted to speak in this silence because I'm very concerned, because I was here at the meeting when this subdivision was going to be subdivided, and there were a lot of people here that were against that subdivision, because some of those people were gonna be landlocked, and it was at that point that the people said, we need a bridge, we need an exit out, they were concerned first about for fire, the fire department wouldn't be able to get back there. Something's happening here with our infrastructure administration, they need to do something. I am very concerned. We're back again to transparency, we're back again to accountability, and to me, I believe that you all, when you first got elected in May, you promised us that you would give an eternal audit. If the internal audit had been done, it would have been noted in a lot of things and a lot of findings. Please, don't allot this money for that. Certificates of obligations were passed to repair streets. Come down to my street, I've been calling, my street, this wide, my street now, this wide, only one car can go through. Certificates of obligations have been flying, for what? For streets, for streets. And in essence, I'm sorry, it's a blind check for whatever council chooses to do, or spending the park, Marro Rosa Park, ridiculous, next to a neighborhood that I just found out has no sewer. Come on, everybody, we, the people of Socorro, are now holding you accountable for everything that you do. Believe me, we are. We're here before you, and we're gonna be coming before you every day, in every meeting. But I'll tell you one thing, you all need to get your information right, and some, one of you should have at least gone back to listen to the tape of when that subdivision was approved. He knows that it was in contingent because the people in the back didn't wanna pay for that, and why should we, the taxpayers, pay for developers to make money in subdivisions? I wanna ask you that question, why? Is it fair? Do you think it's fair for developers to come in and do their subdivisions, and then we, the taxpayers, have to boot up a bridge? Now, have you all gone to the Bureau of Reclamation and asked them to help us with it, and other agencies to help us with it? Why should we be the only ones to pay for it? Please, guys, please, do your homework, get your facts straight, and that is one of our biggest problems with every elected official that comes on board, they don't get their facts straight, they all rely on them. And believe me, some of them, I'm not saying all of them, some of them don't do their homework right, and some of them, when they're told what to do, don't do it, and you can see it. Go back and look at all of your certificates of obligations, and I guarantee you, you're gonna find expenses there that shouldn't even be there. I'm hoping you deny this tonight, I'm hoping you deny this tonight, and I'm asking you to deny it, because I don't wanna pay for that.
Lola, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Oh, I can talk, okay. We did talk to them, there's no funding, okay, so we're gonna have to pony up a month. As far as, as far as you guys told us, we didn't know that there was a contract, I will look into it. And I understand, I understand that this was back in two thousand and eight, your partner was here, and he says it was a contract, I'm gonna go look at it, and try to find out, you know, if it was, we're gonna hold them accountable for it, and that's all it is.
And once again, I mean, it goes back to repetitive thing, we talked about transparency, we talked about, and really, this is why the item is on the agenda, this is why we allow public speaking, so we can all hear their opinions, and basically, can be facts on that opinion. We're not, won't be handed back to not putting it on the agenda, it's not the agenda for a reason, so council can talk about it, can discuss it. There's nothing non-transparent about putting it on the agenda, letting people speak, and then making them remind about it, that's just being picky, 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 but, Mr. Rodriguez?
You know, one of the things is that Rome wasn't built in a day, and it goes back to the same thing. There's a lot of things that are wrong, okay? I'm more worried about three million dollar concern, because three million dollars could go a long way in Socorro, okay? Now, there's things that we are tackling, there's not a lot of stuff that we can do in a day, but we are, and I understand your concerns, I really do, that's why I'm here. I was one of yours, I was just in your spot when all of these concerns came up. We're working on it, but there's so many that we can't tackle them all at once. So we're going, and we're tackling them, and it goes back to the same thing. There's a lot of red tape. Most of us that have businesses or run businesses know that there's no red tape, okay? When we wanna hire an employee, we hire an employee the next day, or that same day on the spot. We wanna build something, all we do is go get a permit, and we build it, and that's it. Here, we have to get an engineer, my God, we have to go out for a big front engineer. Then we have to get a company for it, by the time it's all said and done, in six months. So what I'm trying to say is this, we are working, don't call us in time, and I feel, I feel very, very on edge, and when people come up and say that we're not transparent. One of the things that I will say is this, how transparent can we get? Everything we talk, everything that we're going to talk in executive, we start putting it in the agenda so that you'll know what we're talking about. If we're gonna buy a piece of land, you're gonna know what we're gonna talk, and when we come out of executive, you're gonna know what we said. Why? Because that's as transparent as we can get. We're gonna tackle every single issue, but we need the time, now...
On this one, I've heard that talk about the contract, you're putting out the money and whatnot. I mean, we do have time, do we have time for this? Do you have time to, I mean, I would say we table it, and then look into that back first before we decide to approve something, we'll have to, we can find out if it is true, if it's not, what would happen to it? And that would be...
Yes.
And this, we also, Mr. Cox and Mr. Perez, and my head, give your opinion once they're talking. We go ahead and table the item and find out what would happen there, because if there was a contract that was written out, Mr. Martinez, I'm sure that there was a contract. I mean, if it was there, it should not, should not be there, it should be verbal?
It depends on, the short answer is, it depends, if it was a formal development agreement, if it was a condition placed on the rezoning or other land use restriction, I mean, there's at least half a dozen ways it could have been embodied, some of them are contractions important.
We'll find out what happened, I mean, we go ahead and table it, again, four to twenty-first, Mr. Cox will be there by then, Bill will know more about the, the council, but Mr. Perez will give the opinions as well.
So I'll make a motion to table?
Mr. Rodriguez, just make a motion?
Oh, okay.
Make your hand up. Uh, make your motion, second? Motion in a second, any discussion, Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Bolin?
No, I think the people should be a little patient and give us an opportunity to do something. We can't do this overnight, and there's a lot of things, there's a lot of stuff that we gotta clean up that was left in our hands, so really, it's not our, we're trying to do everything, and we can't do it at once, so please be patient and bear with us, help us out, help us, not try to run it down, because I tell you what, we're here to do it for you, and that's what we ran for, and that's why I didn't wanna run, but I decided that I'd go into this mess and try to clean it up. So I'm here for that, and I hope that the rest are the same.
Motion is set.
Motion made by Gloria Rodriguez, seconded by Renee Rodriguez, to table item number sixteen. Mayor Garcia is absent, Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Bolin?
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
Item tabled?
I should, I should have asked, was the motion to table it with the makers?
Yes, yeah, I was gonna ask, I was gonna...
Okay, so at this time, I do see that the team members are here, right, like that?
Yes.
So I would ask council to go ahead and go, because they are in fact scheduled, we can go into item twenty-seven within executive. Second motion? Okay, so we'll just talk about item twenty-seven, and then we'll come out of executive and it's regular, then we'll... We delegate and go ahead and pass the flag, because they're in the background.
Yes.
All right, so motion in a second, any discussion on this?
Motion made by Maria Rodriguez, seconded by Renee Rodriguez, moving to executive session, for item number twenty-seven, Mayor Garcia is absent, Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?